Good evening, everyone. My name is Debbie McNeil. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Edina, and I am the moderator for tonight's Minnetoka Candidate Forum. I want to welcome our candidates and our viewers on behalf of our host, the League of Women Voters Chapter of Minnetoka, Eden Prairie, and Hopkins. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that encourages the informed and active participation in government and works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate, so the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues that are important to you. There is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting like this, so if your questions are not addressed in this forum, please feel free to contact the candidates directly. Tonight's questions have been submitted by the public online in advance. Questions that are unclear or hostile or of a personal nature will not be used, and those that fall in the same general area may be consolidated. All questions become the property of the League of Women Voters. The election for Minnetoka School Board with three open seats will take place on Tuesday, November 2nd, with early voting, which has already started on September 17th. You can vote in person at Minnetoka City Hall, and there is no party designation for this office. Now, let me introduce the candidates who were able to accept the League's invitation to appear for this forum this evening. I'll start and go right down the line here. First, Jessica Reader, Megan Selinger, Patrick Lee O'Halloran, Christian Vitale, Michael Remical, and Dan Olson. Our forum will begin with 90-second opening statements, and after that, the candidates will respond to questions that were submitted in advance by the voters. We have a timekeeper in the front row, candidates, who will hold up time cards when you have 15 seconds remaining. That's her 30-second card and her 15-second card, and when you must stop. And I ask that you obey the timekeeper's stop sign. Every candidate will be called on to answer every question, and we will alternate who goes first. And the forum will wrap up with one-minute closing statements from each candidate. So now, let's begin with our opening statements for 90 seconds each, and we'll start with Dan Olson.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event and for the City of Minnetoka for hosting it and giving us this beautiful facility in which we can share our ideas. My name's Dan Olson. I'm a parent of two elementary school kids in the district, and I'm running for school board in Minnetoka because they're in elementary school and they've still got nine years of their public school education in front of them. I am a TV producer by trade. I grew up in Minnesota, and then I moved away and spent 10 years working in Los Angeles and New York before I had my children. And we moved back when school was approaching and knew that Minnetoka was going to be the right choice to raise our kids. My priorities in this race, my priorities for the school board are to make sure that board communications and operations are transparent and wholly visible to the constituents and citizens of the city, that board members are accessible. Equity is a priority, and that we maintain the great fiscal responsibility that we have to get us to this point. That's the short version about why I'm here tonight. Thank you so much for having me. I'm very grateful to be included.
Michael Remical.
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this event and giving us the opportunity to share our ideas and answer questions from the community. My name is Michael Remical. We have three children currently in the district and one recent graduate. I am a board-certified general surgeon with a background in medical research. I retired from clinical practice to pursue a PhD in healthcare informatics. I first thought about running for the board as I watched the COVID pandemic unfold, thinking that the board could use my skills and knowledge base to help navigate the pandemic. However, the more I thought about it, I realized that the board affects my family as it does many families in many ways. We have kids that have and have had IEPs and 504 plans, mental health issues like anxiety, are in the high-potential programs, and have attended seven of the 10 schools in the district, including MCEC. I am also the son of a Filipino immigrant and the father of a member of the LGBTQ community, and my nephew is in the district's Spanish immersion program. I hope to be elected so that I can be a voice and advocate for all of these different groups.
Christian Vitale.
Good evening. I'm Chris Vitale. My wife Stacy and I have lived in the district for over 20 years. We have three children, a 2021 grad of MHS, an eighth grader at MME, and a fifth grader at Sinek Heights. I'm originally from Chicago and came to Minnesota to attend Minnesota State University of Mankato, where I earned a degree in electrical engineering while playing football for the Mavericks. I'm honored to be the current board chair and to have led the school board through the challenges of this pandemic. I'm running for reelection because I believe in the Minnetoka vision to deliver child center excellence for all. Over the past four years, I've had a front-row seat to see the amazing achievements of our students, which is fostered by encouraging excellence from everyone and giving them the sports that they need along the way. I'm proud of what we have accomplished for all our students through personalized programs such as Navigator and Momentum. I'm running for reelection because I believe that experience matters. I've been a volunteer in our schools and our community for over 13 years. I've led the PTA at Sinek Heights and many committees in our schools. I'm an active part in our community as a baseball, basketball, and football coach, and am part of the leadership of both Minnetoka baseball and talk of football. Combined with my school board experience, I'm well-connected to the community, which allows me to make the best and most balanced decisions for our students. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to share more about my bid for reelection to continue the excellence. Thank you.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
Good evening. I'd like to also thank the League of Women Voters and all of the voters who submitted questions tonight. My name is Patrick Lee O'Halloran. I'm running for the Minnetoka School Board because I'm a strong believer in this district, but I believe it can be better. I'm a Minnetoka parent. Both my kids have spent their K through 12 years in the district. One graduated last June, and my son is a sophomore at the high school. I've worn many Minnetoka parent hats, cheering my children at the arts center in orchestra or theater performances or on the baseball fields around town. More importantly, I have a proven track record as an advocate for our district and for our students. In 2012, I organized Minnetoka parents to push for a change in teacher licensing law that had threatened our immersion language programs. I helped organize parents to lobby state legislators and joined with a network of immersion parents and Minnetoka administration to successfully push for an exception to language immersion. I've advocated for our district as a member of CASE, that's Community Action for Student Education, and as a volunteer in the 2015 Vote Yes for Minnetoka campaign. I strongly believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and want to work on the board to help turn the policy reflected in Goal Two into measurable progress for our community members who have had less-than-ideal Minnetoka experiences. I want to preserve and protect our excellent programs. We have a track record to be proud of, but I want to bring along all of our community members, even those who have been historically left behind. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Megan Selinger.
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight and giving us the opportunity to speak with you. I'd also like to thank all the viewers at home who are taking the time to become informed voters. I'm running for school board primarily for two reasons. The first is I have two young children in the district. I have a kindergartner and a fourth grader in the Spanish immersion program, and we actually moved into Minnetoka specifically for the Spanish immersion program. My older one had done preschool in Spanish, and so we specifically were looking for that immersion opportunity. I have a vested interest in making Minnetoka the best it can be for them and their peers and the future generations. We've been involved in the school communities, both as students and as community ed participants, as well as with Minnetoka Swim Club and Minnetoka Baseball. The second reason I'm running is that I'm a veteran teacher. I was a high school chemistry teacher for 13 years, and I have experience in both school and district leadership positions. I will bring a strong understanding of teaching and learning and a unique voice of an educator to the school board. There is no one particular issue that motivates me, but I can both recognize the excellence in our district and also see room for growth. Thank you.
Jessica Reader.
Hello. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight. I'm pleased to be here. It's an honor. So, a little bit about me. So, I'm Jessica Reader. I'm running for Minnetoka School Board. My husband Jason and I have two children who have gone all the way through the Minnetoka schools. Our daughter recently graduated in June and is off to school, and so we are now empty nesters. I have a bachelor's in chemistry and a master's in business association, and during the day, professionally, I sell products to Target. So, for the last 15 years, I have worked for Procter &amp; Gamble, and then five months ago, changed to a small company called The Harvest Group. So, that is what I do during the day. What I do at work, besides talking with people and networking and that type of thing, is I sell with data. I am well-positioned to take large amounts of data and to summarize it so that it is easily understood and can be used in order to make solid decisions. In terms of volunteering in the district, I have experience on both the Minnetoka Choir Board, the Minnetoka Theater Board, and currently, I am a Vantage mentor. Tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM, I will be meeting my second Vantage mentee, and I'm very excited about that. Thank you for having me. I look forward to the next hour and a half.
The League of Women Voters has provided questions that are of interest to the community that have been submitted by members of the community, and the first five of these questions are yes or no answers. And then, we'll follow that with a two-minute opportunity for each of you to explain any part of any answer that you've given. The League's also provided me with an answer with a grid in which to call you so that you're not all called in the same order all the time, and so you'll find that maybe you're not always before and after the same person that you're sitting next to. So, let's start with the yes/no questions, which the timer does not have to time. We ask you to attempt to answer these yes or no because you will get a chance to explain them. Okay, the first question is yes/no. Do you believe in mask mandates in public schools? Dan Olson.
Yes.
Michael Remical.
Yes.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
Yes, I believe in mask requirements.
Megan Selinger.
Yes.
Christian Vitale.
Yes.
Jessica Reader.
I believe that's a parental decision.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to try and answer yes or no because you'll get time to explain. Number two, for those who are eligible, do you believe in vaccination mandates within the public schools? Jessica Reader.
I believe that's a decision between a doctor and a patient.
I'm going to ask you to, the ground rules here are to answer yes or no, and then you'll have a chance to explain. So, would you like to answer yes or no?
No, I've answered the question.
Christian Vitale.
No.
Megan Selinger.
Not yet.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
No.
Michael Remical.
Yes, conditionally.
Dan Olson.
Yes, conditionally.
Okay, here's the third question. Do you believe there is a moral responsibility to review how racism has impacted our history within the curricula? Do you believe there's a moral responsibility to review how racism has impacted our history within the curricula? Dan Olson.
Yes.
Michael Remical.
Yes.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
Yes.
Megan Selinger.
Yes.
Christian Vitale.
Yes.
Jessica Reader.
Yes.
Okay, here's question number four. Do you believe the curricula should include civics instruction? Jessica Reader.
Yes.
Christian Vitale.
Yes.
Megan Selinger.
Yes.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
Yes.
Michael Remical.
Yes.
Dan Olson.
Yes.
Okay, the last yes/no question is, do you believe public schools should be free of religious instruction? Dan Olson.
No, with qualifications.
Michael Remical.
I agree, no with qualifications.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
Yes.
Megan Selinger.
Yes, but I'll explain more.
Okay, Christian Vitale.
Yes.
Jessica Reader.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, candidates, for being game to answer these hard questions with yes or no. And now, we'll have two minutes for each person to clarify or comment on anything that he or she has said. So, is that okay, timer? Okay, so let's start now with Dan Olson. Anything you'd like to say for two minutes about any of those questions?
I can wholeheartedly support most of what we just discussed. I think on the COVID front and the religion front, I'd like to make a couple clarifications. As far as COVID-19 goes, I think that we've got a moral obligation to look out for our neighbors and look out for our communities, and I think in some cases, a vaccine mandate is warranted to do so. I would not be in favor of mandating students get the vaccine. I do think that's a decision for their families, but I do believe that district employees should be mandated to get the vaccine to ensure a safe and healthy learning environment for all of the employees and all of the students. On the religion front, I fully believe in the separation of church and state, but our country was founded by a group of people fleeing religious persecution. And learning the history of that persecution and learning the history of all faiths helps make students a more rounded individuals and better at engaging with their peers and culture as a whole. This is not about teaching students religion, it's about teaching students about different religions and different cultures. Thank you.
Michael Remical.
I will clarify on the, again, the COVID pandemic situation as well as the topic of religion. As far as mandates are concerned, as a physician and scientist, I believe that there are times when things such as case counts, as infection rates, as severity of disease should help us dictate when we should use these tools. They are tools, they aren't going to be, they shouldn't be used extensively, they should be used with care and with research backing it. So, I think there are times when they might be necessary, and we should use them when they are. As far as religion is concerned, I agree with Dan. I think that understanding religions of all types and of all origins is essential, especially when we are staring in the face of potential diversity issues. It helps to understand where people are coming from, and I think we can instruct on religion without doing it in such a way that makes people think we are trying to convince people one way or another about it.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
Thank you. First of all, I'll talk about mask requirements. I certainly support them. I've spoken to the board at least twice this year about that. I believe there's a lot of unfortunate politicization about the pandemic in general and particularly about masks and about vaccines. What we need to remember is masking is not about, does my own mask protect me or does your own mask protect you? It's whether, it's a public health measure that we all do together. I don't do it for me, we all do it for all of us because they work better together. And so, universal full mask requirements are the best way to keep everybody safe. The pandemic is not going away, the Delta variant is not going away. I think just today, I read a story that Edina High School is having to close down and go to an e-learning model because of their spike in cases. So, I just, I'm a strong believer in that requirement. With regard to vaccines, I take the answer, or the question to be about a vaccine for the coronavirus, certainly, every school district around the country has had vaccine requirements for a very long time for all sorts of excellent public health measures. I believe vaccines work, and I believe the district should work very hard to encourage people to be vaccinated because that's part of the layered strategy that will help us all be as safe as possible. And then, finally, with regard to the religion question, because we're a public school, I believe we need to follow the rule of separation of church and state and keep instruction, religious instruction out of the classroom. I don't think that the things that Dan and Michael were talking about would run afoul of that. I think religion is something that's part of all of our human history, and it's fair game to be taught in that context. Thank you.
Megan Selinger.
I would like to also address the masks and vaccines. I was a science teacher, and so I believe in following the science, and right now, the data and the science tell us that if we want to keep our kids in school, which is my priority is to keep them in school and learning, that the best way to do that, especially for the younger kids that don't have the option to be vaccinated at this time, is to require masks for all, and that can help them avoid quarantine. In terms of the mask, vaccine mandate, the reason I said not yet is because schools require vaccines for many things. I don't think we're at a point yet with a new vaccine where we're ready to add that to the list, but I can see a point in time where that could possibly be added, and it would be a strong public health choice. In terms of keeping public schools free of religious instruction, the way I answered is because I believe that we should teach the study of religions. My favorite class in high school was actually a comparative world religions course. Even though I'm a science person, that was my favorite class, and if we want to keep with showing our students and reflecting all students in our curriculum, that's one way to do it, is to offer the opportunity to students to learn about the different religions that are out there without teaching them which one they should believe or advocating for one or the other. And then, the last part is in terms of teaching about moral responsibility re-racism, I don't think we can teach true history without acknowledging the racist parts of it. So, I think that we are doing a disservice to our students if we leave out the history of racism in past events and how it may impact what's going on currently.
Christian Vitale.
We're going to sound like broken records up here. Address COVID, the mask mandates and the vaccination requirements, and really, even just the yes-or-no questions. I mean, I think it's artificial to answer questions with just a simple yes or no. You know, as a member of the school board, we rarely have those decisions on the table. It's always something else, so a simple yes or no just won't do it. For example, with our mask mandates, which I voted for through, we don't require them in 9 through 12. We do require them in E through 8, but even then, we have, we do allow for some exemptions. On vaccinations, I personally support the amazing work of getting the COVID vaccine out, and I'm fully vaccinated even though I already had COVID. So, I believe in vaccinations, but I'm also a supporter of choice, just like we are a district of many choices. We provide online options, K through 12, that are just accredited for people that aren't comfortable and students that aren't comfortable in a in-class environment. And, you know, from a vaccination standpoint, my choice was to get it in consultation with a relationship with my doctor. I won't repeat what everybody says about religion, but I think we need to honor the separation of church and state and keep religion and politics, frankly, as much out of the classroom as possible. I would agree with Megan that there are, and others, that there are places for that and classes that can do comparative analysis and comparative study that would be good to teach acceptance.
Jessica Reader.
Great. As Chris said, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I think we actually have a lot in common. I will speak a bit to my thoughts on vaccines and masking. I think I will skip over religion, I agree with the panel here, and go to civics and racism. So, I am thankful that there is a vaccine for COVID and hope that its broad availability will bring our society to the end of this dark chapter very soon. That said, I support everyone's right to choose what medical treatment is best for them and for their children in consultation with their doctor. To be clear, I am not anti-vaccine. I fully realize the positive impact that vaccines have had on our society. I am pro-science. I studied both chemistry and biology extensively in college, and I graduated with a bachelor of science degree in chemistry. In regard to the points on teaching civics and racism in our curriculum, I value diversity and strongly believe that our curriculum should be taught from a multi-ethnic perspective. It is important that we educate, not indoctrinate, by teaching our students how to think, never what to think. I support a balanced view of history, teaching the good and the bad. We need to recognize our global contributions and not cover up our flaws. We have come a long way as a nation, and we have a long way to go. I think we need to focus on both in our classrooms and be sure that we're having robust discussion with our students to understand our triumphs as a nation and the progress that has yet to be made.
Thank you very much, candidates, for your extended answers. Now, we'll go to all questions with one-minute answers for the rest of the forum. And here, so here is the next question. Can you tell us how long you have lived in the school district and tell us whether you have children in the district? And I know some of you have covered this all already in your opening statements, but tell us whatever you'd like to about your background, how long you've lived here, and anything you'd like to about your children or family. And let's start with Michael Remical.
Thank you. We have lived in the district for nine years now. We moved in 2012. We have four children, a recent graduate who is now at the Vermillion Community College up in Ely, Minnesota. We have a junior at the high school. We have a 10-year-old in the Navigator program, 405 Navigator program in Excelsior, and we have an eight-year-old who is knocking on the door of Navigator program, also at Excelsior.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
Thank you. Our family has lived in, has been a Minnetoka family for 13 years. We started off as open enrollees, and we brought our children down to Minnetoka for the Chinese immersion program originally. My wife's family is, my wife's half-Chinese, and they were speaking Chinese from an early age, and we saw an excellent opportunity in the immersion program to continue that, and it's been a great thing for them. Both my kids participated in that. My children have also been part of the Navigators program, the Wings program, the IB program, AP programs, and obviously, a lot heavily focused on the arts programs as well. We're very big, proud members, big supporters and proud members of the community.
Megan Selinger.
So, I'm probably the newcomer to Minnetoka in terms of years. We actually only moved here about four and a half years ago. I came via California, but I'm born and raised in Alaska, so Minnesota was kind of a nice medium between California and Alaska in some ways, and my mom and her extended family are all here. I have two boys in the district, a kindergartner and a fourth grader, and they're both in Spanish immersion. Like I said, that's how we ended up in this district. We came and looked at the different immersion programs in the state and landed on Minnetoka and chose wisely, I believe. My kids have also been involved, like I said, in some of the affiliated athletics as well as some of the in-school programs, but we're happy to be here.
Chris Vitale.
I covered a lot of this in my opening, but I'll repeat a little bit. We moved into the district in September.
We moved into the district in September of 2001, right around Labor Day. So, a few days before a significant American event happened. And so, we'll always remember moving in to our new house. So, we've been here 20 years, my wife Stacy and I. Like I said, we have three children. My daughter just graduated and she's also at Minnesota State University of Mancato now, where she's going to be a nurse. We have two boys, an eighth grader at MME and a fifth grader at scenic heights. And my daughter enjoyed the Vantage program cheerleading at the high school. My boys are more sports and right now in football and getting ready for baseball tryouts.
Jessica Reader. Talk closer to your mic, I think.
I grew up going to Hopkins High School. We lived out in Golden Valley, moved out of state for a number of years and then moving back to raise our children here. Specifically chose the Minnetoka School District, knowing of its excellence. Our son graduated in 2018. He is now at Iowa State. He's a senior studying supply chain management. And then our daughter, who I mentioned earlier, just graduated in June. She is at Belmont University in Nashville, studying musical theater. She spent her time in Spanish immersion here in Minnetoka and a lot of time in the theater. Our son spent a lot of time playing Minecraft frankly, going to school, taking the AP classes and so on, and also playing football on the O-line and that was a great time. My husband is a teacher at scenic heights and he has been there for 10 years.
Dan Olson.
I'm sort of in the same boat as Megan. I've been here about four and a half, five years. My wife and I moved back from the East Coast. Our boys were born in Connecticut. And as it was time to start looking for where they were going to school, we zeroed in on Minnetoka. We love it here. We're so thankful to be here. We've had a great five years here. They're twins. They're in fourth grade at Clear Springs. They love their principal. And I've never felt more a part of the Minnetoka community than I do now, going through this process with these folks up here. It's been an absolutely wonderful time getting to know a great variety of our citizens and groups around our community and to more fully realize what a wonderful and special town this is.
Let's take the next question now, which will be a one-minute answer. And here's the question. Would you please share something about your own social identity, including your personal identity autobiography and your commitment to personal development? Please share something about your own social identity, including your personal identity autobiography and your commitment to personal development. And let's start with Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
I would say one thing that anyone who knows me well knows about me is I'm a lawyer. That's my profession, but my favorite job is dad. And so, being a parent in the Minnetoka community is a big part of my identity as a person and I care very deeply about the success of our district and all the students from that lens. I think my commitment to development as a person relates to that. I am at the stage of my life where my oldest has left the home to go on to college and my remaining child is only a few years behind. So, my personal development will be to use those skills that I've learned as an active parent as well as a professional in the community for the best effort in our community.
Megan Selinger.
I think something that explains a lot about me as a person now is that I was actually a competitive gymnast from the age of eight until I turned 21 and graduated from college. The reason that explains a lot about me is if you've ever met competitive gymnasts, you know that we tend to be perfectionists and have a really high work ethic, sometimes to our own detriment on both of those things. I know how to work as a teammate. I was a member of a college team. I was a member of a high school team. I was a member of a private team. I also know a lot about coaching and learning. As an instructor in gymnastics, it's very similar to being in the classroom and it's also similar to being a parent in a lot of ways. I find myself employing strategies that my coaches use with me on my own children and kind of trying to impart some of that same life lessons that I got from gymnastics for my boys.
Chris Vitale.
Yeah, you know, I start with a father like a lot, I'm sure, up here. One of my favorite jobs, I'm a husband, I'm a son, I'm a grandson, I'm an engineer, I'm a coach. Even though I was an offensive lineman, I tell my kids that I was a collegiate athlete on scholarship, even though they don't believe me. You know, I'm a leader. I'm a school board member. I love our community. You know, try to be balanced and committed to doing what is right. On the personal development side, I love people. I try to surround myself with as many people as possible and learn as much as I can. I spend a lot of time trying to be, learning to be a better leader and a lot of time trying to be a better school board member right now.
Jessica Reader.
All right. Like many have said, first of all, I'm a mom and a wife. My family is very important to me. I mentioned earlier that we're now empty nesters. So, you know, that gives us an opportunity now that our children are off on their own paths to do different and new things versus what we've been doing for the past, you know, 21 years, raising our children. So, recently, I changed jobs. After 15 years with a very large company, I changed to a very small company. So, I was the second of four hires here with this small company called The Harvest Group. So, it's very entrepreneurial and it's to challenge myself to do something new and fresh. And it's been a wonderful ride so far and getting better. And then, of course, running for school board. That is a significant challenge as well that I look forward to taking on, should I be elected. I recently took the Enneagram test and I am a number nine, which is a peacemaker. And so, generally, I really want to bring people together. Thank you.
Dan Olson.
As an individual, I've always been a storyteller at heart. That's what drew me to theater growing up. That's what drew me to Los Angeles and New York. I got a great public school education, growing up in Hastings, Minnesota, and I got a great real-world cultural education, spending my time in Los Angeles and New York and just being immersed in people from all over the world. And this may be unpopular to say, but COVID actually, a lot of 2020 was really good for me and really good for my family. I have never been able to spend as much time around my family as I was able to last year and we've grown so much closer because of it. It's given us the opportunity to know each other better. It's given me the opportunity to focus on my physical and mental health in ways I have never been able to before. And I'm just eternally grateful for that time at home with my family.
Michael Remical.
I think the core of my personal identity is centered around the support my parents gave me while I was growing up. My brothers and I, they really gave us, instilled in us the notion that we could do whatever we want and supported us in that way. After graduating from college, I started looking into getting into medical school. And to pursue that, I went into doing research at the University of Minnesota, which is where I got my research experience. And it was through that experience, having to work on a volunteer basis to get that experience and sustaining my life by working at Abercrombie &amp; Fitch for a year, followed by Old Navy for a year, which I don't usually admit in public, that really kind of instilled in that confidence of my ability to do anything. So, I think for me, it's that confidence that I gained that I will try to instill to our children and to encourage that growth in everybody.
The next question is for one-minute answers. What programs would you champion to acknowledge that not all graduates are college-bound? What programs would you champion to acknowledge that not all graduates are college-bound? Meaning, high school graduates. Can we start with Megan Selinger?
I think we're actually very innovative in this particular category. We have the Momentum Program being developed and just kind of getting off the ground at the high school level. And I'm actually really excited about that, the fact that we have a trades-minded pathway for our students who not only may not be interested in a four-year college, they may have something else in mind, but it's also an area of shortage in the workforce. And so, I think we're doing ourselves our favor and our students a favor by offering that. But I would also go down to the earlier levels. I've been really impressed with even in kindergarten or first grade that we have things like independent investigations for our students where they go and meet with a teacher who helps guide them through a project where they just get to research something that they're interested in. And for a lot of those students, they remember that going forward as they get older and it may give them some ideas and pathways that they might not have thought of otherwise.
Chris Vitale.
This one's near and dear to my heart. So, in the four years that I've been on the board, we've talked a lot about the changing culture and just the changing personality of the students in our district. As Megan said, you know, not everybody, a four-year degree is right for everybody or know what they want to do out of school. There's plenty of jobs and trades that you can come right out. I am really proud to be part of the board and be one of the champions of the Momentum Program. It's a skilled trades program. We've recently approved a new building for it. So, we're building on to the high school in order to house this program. And I wholeheartedly support this for those in, and like I said, to give choice to our students. You know, whether that's post-secondary or that's right into a skilled trades program.
Jessica Reader.
So, over the past year, I have learned a great deal about how Minnetoka serves its broad student population, offering excellent, developmentally appropriate academics at every level. Often, the conversation is limited to the ACT scores, the AP and IB coursework and the high percentage of college-bound graduates. The reality is that Minnetoka offers top-rated curriculum at every level, subsidizing state funding for special education with additional funding to ensure they are not only meeting state requirements, but far exceeding them. The Wilson Reading Program and Sale Programs are just two examples of where Minnetoka goes above and beyond to serve every student. Additionally, as I've been out and speaking with people, the Momentum Program, and I know others have mentioned it, that means so much to people. I have met at least three separate families who wish that that would have been available to their children as they had gone through Minnetoka. So, I think that is a huge leap forward and I applaud the current board and our superintendent for championing it. Thank you.
Dan Olson.
Again, I think we're on the broken record here with the Momentum Program, but it's a fantastic opportunity for students who are fascinated by the trades and want to take that as a career path. Minnetoka has so much to offer all of our learners. I mean, Vantage, getting to meet with real professionals and learn from them firsthand. The Sale Program, helping students just transition to their own independent lives. We're going to have a special new facility for that. And I think it goes beyond special programs, just to the general culture in our schools where education is tailored to the learner. And I think in every classroom and in every program, our teachers are looking out for their students, helping them find their strengths and guiding them to these programs that only a district like Minnetoka can offer. So, whether it's immersion, leading to a gap year abroad to figure out what you want to do or extracurriculars, helping you figure out where you might be interested in going. I think Minnetoka has a lot to offer.
Michael Remical.
I think it goes without saying at this point that I also agree with the Momentum Program and some of the other similar options that are there. I think since we have two children who have had a lot of struggles academically, I think one of the things that we've noticed is that they feel a lot of pressure because of the focus on academic achievement. I think pulling back from some of that might be helpful in order to just kind of spread that message that, you know, you don't need to go to college. Our daughter ended up taking a year, year and a half off in order to figure out what she really wanted to do. I think a lot of credit should go to the counseling services that really help the students guide that thought process and the little-known Compass Program that actually helped our daughter quite a bit as far as figuring out how she learned best and how she could best navigate the waters and figure out what she wanted to do and how to do it.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
Thank you. I agree, it's a great question because one of the things I'm hearing as I'm out in the community talking about this campaign is that the district really does talk a lot about its high achievers, the ACT scores and the AP scholars. And those are wonderful achievements to aspire to. But as a construction lawyer, I know that there are excellent fulfilling careers in the trades that people should be able to take advantage of. So, things like Momentum are a great opportunity. I would, as a board member, want to continue those efforts to find those opportunities. I also would want to think about community education. It's one thing that we forget about the school board having a role in, but that's a place where all members of our community, even those without school-aged children, can participate and can better themselves. And there are wonderful programs about arts and other languages and all sorts of health education you can get just through community education.
Here's the next question for one-minute answers. Please provide specific examples of how you will use your position on the school board to improve diversity and inclusion instruction, addressing BIPOC and LGBTQ plus issues in relation to Goal Two. Can we start with Chris Vitale? I'll read it again. Please provide specific examples of how you will use your position on the school board to improve diversity and inclusion instruction, addressing BIPOC and LGBTQ plus issues in relation to Goal Two. Can we start with Chris Vitale? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Yes, this is work that the board is already, and the district are already engaged in. Last year, and Student Voice plays such an important role in the school board and in the district. And we have been hearing for years, not for years, but we had started student listening sessions and hear from students that their experience at Minnetoka was different, that they didn't feel like they belonged or that there was people that looked like them. And so, Goal Two, our Excellence of Belonging goal, is our first step into that. And that's to a base-level look at our policies and our curriculum and take a look at all that stuff through a different lens with the goal of providing common language, starting with empathy, so we can put each other in, we can put ourselves in each other's shoes and really to go along with our excellence that students belong.
Megan Selinger.
Thank you for the question. I have a couple of ideas around Goal Two. I taught at a high school that did quite a bit of work around equity and it was teacher-led and primarily focused on two things. One was around microaggressions and helping teachers and staff and students recognize microaggressions that might be happening to our BIPOC population. Another area that we worked a lot on was culturally relevant teaching, so making sure that students see themselves reflected in the curriculum. Sometimes, that's very simple, reading books at the elementary level that show a variety of principal characters. Sometimes, it's looking for examples, like in a chemistry classroom, of women of color that have made contributions. The other thing is I'd really like to see us have an enhanced mutual respect policy in our district with zero tolerance for bullying, cyberbullying, harassment, threats or intimidation. When I've seen the language we have right now, it seems like it could be tightened up and made a little bit more clear.
Jessica Reader.
I believe that every student deserves a developmentally appropriate academic education in an environment free from discrimination, harassment, and political bias. It is the school board's responsibility to set policy that is enforced by the superintendent and the administration to ensure that students feel safe and that classroom and extracurricular environments promote dignity and respect for all, regardless of gender, race, ethnicity, ability, sexuality, or political leaning. When bullying, defined as ongoing, from a position of power with the intention to humiliate or intimidate, occurs, it must be taken seriously with consequences proportionate to the offense. One of the earlier candidates just mentioned the same issue. I do believe that our bullying policy is strong, but I do believe there is opportunity in the enforcement of it throughout the district when bullying truly occurs as defined by my statement.
Dan Olson.
As a parent of young kids, this is really important to me, because I don't know who they're going to grow up to be. I don't know what their sexual preferences may be, and I want to ensure we have a district that is safe and accepting for who they really are. I think Goal Two is a great first step. I think it's important that the district hires a DEI staff position, someone with the appropriate expertise to advise and advise the board and advise the superintendent on DEI policy and help implement that throughout the district, because it's important that students see themselves in their adult counterparts in the district, so they know they have a safe place to go. Listening sessions are important, a dedicated DEI committee that meets regularly, where the board actively enrolls those members and those voices that are absent in its ranks. And I think open enrollment is actually a great way to help our budget and increase diversity in the district.
Michael Remical.
I agree with Dan on many of these points. I think for specific examples, I would look into getting somebody at the administration level that would be in charge of overseeing DEI activity and policy in the district. I think putting a resource, a DEI resource person in every, or designating at least in every school building would be a very useful tool, especially when teachers or students are feeling like they are kind of set adrift. And I think probably the most important thing we can do in terms of promoting diversity and equity and inclusion is getting people to the table, convincing them to come in, get involved, you know, create, like Dan said, create a committee specifically centered around diversity and inviting members of the various communities in to be part of this and other committees, so we can hear their voices, community focus groups, things like that, in order to really invite people from all areas and all communities in to have a voice and feel that their voice is welcome.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
Thank you, it's a great question. I think diversity, equity, inclusion are very important to me in my campaign. My slogan is Excellence and Equity. I believe they go hand in hand. And one of the things we need to do as a board is to lead and focus on the issue. I heard the story recently of a recent graduate who, on her first day at her new college, hearing her college president say that "We welcome all of you from all of your backgrounds, your different experiences and backgrounds are unique, and they add value and they make us excellent." And that was something that brought her to tears, because she never heard that and never felt seen in that way in Minnetoka. And I think that needs to stop. So first of all, we need to welcome and recognize and celebrate diversity. I agree with working with, on paid staff. There are districts around us who are way ahead of us, and I would want to talk to those people who've been actively involved, for example, in Hopkins and other districts, who have been leading on this way ahead of us.
Candidates, here's the next question for a One Minute Answer. What is your experience with multicultural organizations or programs that would demonstrate that you are capable of leadership on the Minnetoka School Board? What is your experience with multicultural organizations or programs that demonstrates your capability to lead on the Minnetoka School Board? Jessica Reader, would you want to start, please?
Yes. So, thinking of that example, my last workplace, Procter &amp; Gamble, where I worked downtown on the Target team, we actually had a very, very diverse group of people that I worked with, and it was a pleasure. We celebrated all types of differences, and we would have, you know, celebrate Black History Month, we would celebrate Asian History Month, we would bring in food, we would, you know, celebrate. But we worked alongside each other for a common goal as well, and that was a great experience. One of the things that I did in the last year before I left was I led a DEI focus group at our workplace. And so it was voluntary, anyone who wanted to volunteer, and probably maybe 40% of our workforce did that. And I led a group where we would read, we would come together, we would talk about issues, things that were new to many of us, like redlining and watching, you know, a movie and then talking about it. And it was, it was very useful and educating for all of us.
Christian Vitale.
Thank you. You know, I'm obviously the board chair for the school board, and I think my record is out there, and so I won't go. But in my, in my private life, I worked for a German family company. So we're an automation company that's based out of Germany, and so I've been there 21 years now. And really, working in that environment, their culture is just so much different. Yes, I'm an engineer, we always hear about German engineering, but it's taken a long time to really understand the relationships. And I've, I've been so successful and executive at my company because of my ability to work with different cultures, understand, and how to get things done. And so that's what I bring to the board, you know, from that standpoint.
Dan Olson.
For me, this starts with recognizing my upbringing as a privileged white male in this country, and realizing that a lot of these systems in this country was built for me, in my experience. And it's only through a great amount of work and self-education and self-reflection and dealing with tough and conflicting emotions that I've been able to make the journey to where I am today. I self-educate myself, I join organizations just to read more about experiences of other people in the United States. And I think the most important thing is, my time working in cities like Los Angeles and New York, every single job was a multicultural organization of friends and collaborators. I lived and worked with a great variety of people every day, and I'm all the richer for it.
Michael Remical.
I suppose I have a lot of experience in multicultural organizations, because being a half-Filipino, I am kind of the token multicultural person on a lot of the organizations that I am involved in. There were very few non-Caucasians in the school system where I grew up, but the experiences like that led me to reach out and really own that and live in it. When I did my residency, it was at the Hennepin County Medical Center, which is probably one of the most ethnically diverse pockets in the Twin Cities. And really being able to be exposed to many, many different cultures really helped me fine-tune that sense. I was actually, as half-Caucasian, I was the only Caucasian person in my graduating class and residency. So at the end, I ended up kind of flipping the tables on my own experience, so.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
Thanks. First of all, in terms of multiculturalism generally, as I mentioned before, my wife's family is half-Chinese, and I've spent a lot of time around a completely different culture than one I grew up in, and my experience has been far richer for it. In some ways, I feel like I've been talking about multiculturalism, diversity, and inclusion for my entire adult life, because it was a big topic from the time I graduated college. As a, in my professional life, I'm a construction lawyer, which you might think was a very bland, white profession, and it can be. But as a leader in the construction law section of the Minnesota State Bar Association, I authored and enacted our first diversity plan for recruiting members and recruiting and increasing diversity in our programs by making measurable goals that we could then hold ourselves accountable to. And I would want to use that same experience in the Minnetoka Board by making measurable goals we could make ourselves accountable to.
Megan Selinger.
My main multicultural organization that I have experience with was the school that I taught at in California. So, the school I taught at had more students of color than it did white students, it had staff members from many different backgrounds. I had English-language learners who had just moved into the country within the last one or two years and were now thrown into a chemistry classroom as a 10th grader. So my background in multiculturalism has really been through getting to know students and their families, hearing about their struggles, hearing about their concerns, learning about just family traditions or the foods that they brought at lunch. When I had students that were legitimately concerned about their family members being sent away because they weren't sure of their immigration status. So I think just getting to know people is a huge step in understanding each other and where we're coming from. And you come to find out pretty quickly that there's a lot more in common than there are differences, but recognizing those individual characteristics of a person is really important relationally and in terms of them feeling valued.
Here's our next question. How would you eradicate race, gender, religious, ability, and LGBTQ+-based educational disparities? I'll read it again. How would you eradicate race, gender, religious, ability, and LGBTQ+, oh, sorry, biased educational disparities? Dan Olson, could we start with you on that question? Dan Olson, would you, okay, I just want to be sure you heard me. Thank you.
The eradication of bias in, as regards to race and gender and religion and ability and LGBTQ issues in education is a, it's a huge issue. It's not something that can happen all at once, that any one person can do, or dare I say, that any board can do on its own. I think what the board's responsibility in this situation is, is to turn outward and start searching out those voices who can inform where education needs to go and how it needs to change to eradicate these biases. And I think one of the biggest resources that we have is our teachers. Our teachers are in the classroom every day with our students, they see who they are, they see what they need. And I think our teachers deserve the latitude to experiment with their curriculum a little bit and tailor it to their learners to make an attempt to eradicate these biases on a small scale.
Jessica Reader.
Reading up on this, what I've, I've learned is that Minnetoka's achievement gaps between BIPOC students, or I believe it's black students in particular, and white students, is far, far smaller than it is statewide. And so we seem to be doing something very right here in Minnetoka. Not only are those gaps significantly smaller, but they're decreasing every year. And so they're, I guess I should say, improving. And so while I imagine there are still opportunities, I do not know of specific examples of where I can imagine that a teacher is teaching a black student, or an Asian student, or a white student, or a gay student differently in their classroom. I may be naive, but it's hard for me to imagine, and maybe it's because I can never imagine myself doing that. I'll just leave it there.
Michael Remical.
In my, actually, my current education, I'm studying an area of population and public health. One of the, one of the current concepts in that is that we can improve population and public health by really focusing on what are called social determinants of health, those things that exist above and beyond just the direct, the readily identified things that influence our health, like socioeconomic standing. I think there is a lot to be learned in education from that concept, that there are social determinants of education, and I think focusing in on those and trying to figure out how we can eliminate the discrepancies will go a long way to helping us really eliminate those gaps between the different diverse groups.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
I think attacking these biases starts with recognizing that they exist, acknowledging not only the historical ill-treatment of members of our BIPOC, LGBTQ, and other communities, but also recognizing that that's going on today, some of it overtly, some of it is implicit bias, but we need to be able to confront it and address it. As I said before, I think it's very important to focus on the students, as well as teachers, staff, and other members of our community, so that everyone feels that they are valued here and that their voices are heard. Some of that is a very long process, there are long conversations that will take a long time to try and get people to recognize these biases and work together to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion across the board to help attack them. But I think by working together with eyes open, we can do the best we can.
Megan Selinger.
I would echo some of what has already been said. I don't think that we, as a single entity, can eradicate any of that, but there are steps that are very tangible that we can take. And I think, like was said, I think helping people recognize their own bias is a really good first step. I'll share an example that happened with me during professional development when I was teaching, is they projected a table on a screen, and it had a list of microaggressions that sometimes happen in classrooms. And I was looking at it, and I recognized that I had done one of them. And that moment for me was, it was a little bit heartbreaking, because I recognized that I had had students in my classroom that I was committing, what I didn't even realize, was this tiny little offense that was going to stick in the back of their mind the rest of the day. So I think helping people recognize it is a first step, and then we have to build the safety and the trust in classrooms to have the hard conversations. So when we get to the place where our students feel safe and they feel like they can speak their minds, then we can have honest conversations.
Chris Vitale.
Yeah, this is work that is, that is currently going on. You know, our district works hard to break down barriers for students to ensure that they can get all the support they need to achieve their personal best. I think that, and I believe that our personalized approach to learning is so important. We need to give students what they need to be successful and to continually seek to identify and remove any of those barriers. Goal Two in our district was an additional aspect of this work, to ensure that our curriculum review process was also reviewed with an eye to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that our curriculum review committee, which is made up of administrators, teachers, staff, and parents, and students, had diverse representation.
Here's our next question, which I think will probably be, this will be the last question we have time for, and then we'll go to our closing remarks. So the question is, do you believe that the district has an obligation to teach about sustainability and to consider sustainability in its capital investment and facilities decisions? Do you believe the district has an obligation to teach about sustainability and to consider sustainability in its capital investment and facilities decisions? And I wonder if we could start with my... with Michael Remical.
Thank you. I do believe that the district has an obligation to teach about sustainability and carry that through in its actions. I think it actually does a fair, a really good job with, with acting in terms of utilizing things in such a way that are sustainable. I think it's pretty well-known that the school district utilizes a large number of wind farms to, to get its energy, use for an energy source. I think that, that was a great initiative. I think there is a lot that, that we can do as far as teaching, some of that is by demonstrating, modeling that behavior, but also, you know, instilling it in, in the classroom as well.
Dan Olson.
Climate change is probably one of the most serious issues facing all of us. And I want to ensure that my boys grow up to live in a sustainable, habitable world, and I think a big part of that is our responsibility. I think it's the obligation of every public body in our state, in our communities, to teach sustainability, implement sustainability, try to learn about sustainability as much as possible. And I actually think it's a really big opportunity for Minnetoka as well, because I think it's an area that a district with Minnetoka's resources can really innovate. We've embraced wind farms, we've embraced creating our own information infrastructure and things like that. And by carefully examining the future challenges we're going to face, I think Minnetoka has a great opportunity to lead on issues of sustainability and climate change.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
My answer to the question is yes. We do need to teach sustainability. We also need to consider sustainability in our, in our decisions. Climate change is a fact of life that is going to, if, if not corrected, have a huge impact. And in fact, it's too late to reduce some of those impacts. It will be with our children and the members of our school district for most of their lives. So we need to teach sustainability as a part of a group effort to mitigate climate change and deal with those stark realities. As a, as a facilities and capital improvement developer, we need to make sure that we understand that what might have been a sufficient resource allocation ten or fifteen years ago will not be. We always have been saying that the last five years have been the hottest on record, but as planners, we have to realize that this year was the coldest one of the rest of our planning future.
Jessica Reader.
Yes, absolutely. I care about the environment, and I think it's critical that we're teaching our students as they go through their school day to care about the environment as well. I can't imagine that most households are not recycling, are not thinking through the products that they buy and how that's contributing to waste. I am aware of what many have mentioned and impressed by what I've learned that our district is doing in terms of the wind farms, the LED lighting, solar panels, those types of things that the district is wisely using our money on and investing in our community and in our environment. I think the one watch-out that I would have is we cannot take major parts of our learning time and dedicate them to this versus core subjects. I believe it's something that can be taught along the way without instilling fear in children. I think that is something we have to be careful of.
Megan Solinger.
The short answer is yes. We are actually obligated to teach sustainability because it's part of the next-generation science standards. And so our teachers, especially science teachers, do have an obligation to teach the standards, and that is one of them. But that said, I also think we have a moral obligation to, because our students are going to be the ones dealing with the consequences of our choices currently. I think it should be embedded into academic learning on a regular basis and in every subject. It's very easy to impart pieces. You can look at data around temperatures in the land in Alaska over the last fifty years. You can make a math lesson out of it, you can make a science lesson out of it, you can talk about graphing, you can talk about the impact on the native Alaskan tribes that are having to relocate because of it. So there's a lot, lot of opportunities to embed it into a variety of places in a way that just enhances their understanding. I also think it's a really good opportunity for us to be innovative, and some of these problems we can throw out to the students. The students in the research program at the high school could do great things, posed this exact question.
Chris Vitale.
The, the answer is yes. And I believe that this is something that the district is already doing. Some of the, the panel have talked about it, but we are probably the leading, or one of the leading public school districts in sustainability. And a quick shout-out to Dr. Peterson and Paul Bourgeois for leading us down that path. I think it's ninety-plus percent of all of our district energy are coming from renewable sources now, and I think it's next year that it will be a hundred percent of all of our schools. We've done that through solar farms and everything else. We've reduced our usage, even though our enrollment's gone up with the use of LED lighting, from anywhere from classrooms to parking lots. The, the football field was replaced last year. Vet Stadium, baseball will be this. We, our long-term facilities plan, we're changing our HVACs. And actually, we're teaching this in our schools. There's a global advantage strand called, I believe it's called Global Food Sustainability, where they're working on this in the classroom, and that's a choice.
Thank you very much, candidates, for all your thoughtful answers to all these questions. Now it's time for your closing remarks, which would be for one minute each. Is that okay with the timer? Okay. And so can we start with you, Megan Solinger, please?
So thank you again for coming tonight. I would hope that when you think about the role of a school board member, that you would consider factors, like I'm rational, objective, data-driven, and level-headed. I'm going to assess issues from an objective standpoint. I also recognize that the role of a school board member is to represent the best interests of all of our students and families, regardless of whether or not my own personal beliefs align with theirs. As a teacher, you don't only teach students you agree with. You are obligated to find a way to work together to meet learning goals, and I view school board membership in a similar capacity. I'm always going to consider all information and data I'm presented. I'm going to engage in dialogue with other school board members, district staff, and students. I'd actually really like to see a non-voting student member on school board, but that's a different conversation. And I believe I would do a good job. I would bring a unique lens to the school board. We don't have a current educator on the board, and I think I can bring a different perspective. And then my nine-year-old wanted me to mention that he would really like healthier lunches.
Chris Vitale.
Thank you. I'm honored to have served as a leader on the Minnetoka School Board, and hope that you'll support me by re-electing me to one of the three available seats. Through my extensive district involvement and four years on the school board, I've achieved proven results. Minnetoka has nationally-recognized student achievement, outstanding parent satisfaction, and a triple-A bond rating. I moved the district forward as a board leader and have led the school board through the challenges of a pandemic. I work hard, listen carefully, analyze all options to make balanced decisions that are best for all children. I will leverage my past experience and my engineering background to plan for our district's future. I welcome your thoughts and questions at reelectchrisvitale.com. I look forward to continuing my collaboration with the constituents of this, this district, and most importantly to it, ensuring that the district provides all children with the tools they need to be successful in all aspects of their lives. I thank you and ask for your vote on November 2nd.
Jessica Reader.
Thank you. Thank you again for organizing tonight. It has been a pleasure to be here. I think I can uniquely offer the experience that I have with my graduated students. I have had the experience. We've gone through and experienced so much of what Minnetoka has to offer, and yet we're more objective, or I'm more objective, because my children are finished and have moved on. As I mentioned earlier, my analytical experience, my business experience, my financial acumen that comes along with the work that I do will be critically important going forward as the, the district looks to capped enrollment and capped funding, and yet will still have increasing expenses each year. So those are real problems that will need to be solved. With that, I thank you again for the time tonight and for watching, and ask that you would vote for Jessica Reader on November 2nd. Thank you.
Dan Olson.
I'm running for Minnetoka School Board as a collaborator. It's in my nature, and my goal as a candidate in this campaign is to be as truthful and reasonable as I can and to always be accessible to you in the community. It's a great responsibility to be entrusted with helping to guide the future of our district. It shouldn't be taken lightly, and I'm, I'm motivated by my children. And, and because they have nine more years in front of them, I want to work to ensure that our tradition of excellence and fiscal responsibility in this district continues. As a TV producer, producer, I know I bring a non-traditional experience to the job, but I spend every day living at the intersection of vision and reality. I'm responsible for being fiscally prudent while bringing a project to life and collaborating with a great variety of people. So I ask for your vote on November 2nd. You can visit my website at www.Olsen-school. And I thank the League of Women Voters and the City of Minnetoka, and I hope we get to discuss more in person soon.
Michael Remical.
During my medical training, I was trained to assimilate and make decisions based on new data and changing scenarios. While I don't claim to be an expert on running a school district, I have a clear passion for learning, as evidenced by the fact that I am in what my family refer to, refers to as twenty-ninth grade. These attributes, combined with my family's close connections to numerous communities within the district, will, I hope, make me an attractive candidate for our residents. I am dedicated to keeping our children safe, encouraging growth through diversity, and engaging the students, teachers, and the community as partners in the management of the district. I also look to continue the tradition of, of academic excellence through robust programming that enables a personalized path for each student to find success as an individual while thriving as a part of our diverse and vibrant school community.
Patrick Lee O'Halloran.
I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters and all of you for listening, especially to the League for its role in encouraging participation. The school board is a critical democratic institution, and I encourage everyone who's paying attention to this to, to vote in the election and get everyone you know who is a regular voter to make sure they focus on the school board. I have a proven track record as an advocate, as a strategic leader, as a business owner, and I think I can bring some unique skill sets to bear on the board. I strongly believe in our program, our staff, and our teachers. I would like to bring my vision of excellence and equity to the board to make sure that we recognize and affirm the different voices in our community and really bring the best talents out of our students, teachers, and staff. In closing, I'd say if you want to know more about me, please check out my website at leeohalloran.com. And again, remind everyone that early voting has already begun, and I'd ask for one of your votes.
Thank you very much, Minnetoka School Board candidates. While you, school board candidates are leaving and the mayoral candidate is seated, we will now hear a message from League of Women Voters, Minnetoka Eden Prairie Hopkins Communications Chair, Susan Dempsey. Thank you for participating this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil.